Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shipren, and I will be chairing the planning board meeting for tonight, Monday, July 26, 2021, and we are at 6:30 PM. And we all know that the meeting is being recorded. Okay, so Michael just texted me, and he just got his alarm for the meeting, so he should be calling us shortly. I'd like a roll call, please, of the board members first, and then the others in attendance.
Hi, Carol Hofstas.
Julie Byers.
Laura Shipren. And could I have Beth, would you go next, and then the other attendees?
Sure, Elizabeth Faxon, Planning Board Administrator.
Okay. I need the others who are on the call to please unmute and announce yourself.
Hi, my name is Adria Boynton with Weston and Sampson.
Hi.
Andrea Wood, Master Plan Committee.
Karen Chapman, MRPC.
Hello, Karen. Thank you. If you're not speaking, please make sure that you mute your microphone, please.
Hillary King, EEA.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay, 1.3, approval of minutes for July 12, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve as they were sent to us? From a board member?
Carol's on mute. I think she's trying to...
She's probably trying to make the motion. Is that what you were doing?
Yes.
Okay, Carol.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 12, 2021, as written.
Okay, is there a second?
And Julie Byers will second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion, additions or deletions to that? Okay, none. I need a roll call vote to approve the minutes of July 12.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Laura Shipren, yes. And I apologize because I've already messed up the agenda. One said 1.3, but never said 1.2. So I apologize. 1.2 is chairman's additions or deletions to the minutes. Now I have a note of instructions here. We are going to add 1.2 Chairman's additions, review of MRPC updated sidewalk and bike maps. Okay, that was not on... So is it going to go in work session?
Sure. Yeah, it would actually go right under work session. What do we got here? It would go under...
The safe routes there at 2.4.
Yeah, so it would go under 2.6, actually. But it just additional correspondence are received today, so... And those maps were updated maps that we received.
Just today.
Yep, and they wanted feedback by August, I believe it was 6th. So the board's not meeting again until the 16th. So I thought if you wanted to look at them tonight, you could do that, or you could work out a session as well, and I can compile comments and get them to MRPC.
Okay, so I will try to... Under 4.1, when we're actually going to address a work session to meet again, can we just address perhaps putting this under our work session?
Yeah, in the next meeting? Yeah, that's a good... Thank you, because I know that's right. That makes sense.
Going on that, just to have those two things to deal with.
And if I just may, could you please appoint Julie as a full voting, a full member this evening? She's an associate, so I just want to make sure that we have three voting members, full members.
Hey, Beth, I just got in, sorry.
Hi, Mike. Fantastic. Ross, that then?
Okay, Michael, had you read the minutes? We're in our vote.
Yes, I did read the minutes.
Okay, so are you in favor of approving the minutes of July 12?
Yes, Mike Verosco, I vote to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And can I have a motion, please, to have Julie Byers as a full voting member at this meeting?
I'll make a motion to appoint Julie Byers as a voting member for this meeting of July 26, 2021.
And is there a second?
Mike Verosco, I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Laura Shipren, yes. Okay, thank you very much, guys. And while we're on that, Beth, can you just explain... Do we still have a vacancy on the board?
Yes, a full member vacancy is for a term to expire at the next annual town election. And that that would be filling Selectman Chaz Sexton Duranian seat, which the term actually expires in 2024. But the way it's done is whoever fills the seat will fill it till the next town election, and then they will be on the ballot, placed on the ballot, hopefully.
Basically, keep announcing that there is a posting for this vacancy, and that people can turn in their volunteer forms if they're interested in serving in that position. Correct? Okay. Thank you, Beth. All right, so next is our work session, 2.1, 2021 Master Plan Update, Master Plan Committee and Board Members. Draft chapter comments, draft master zoning chapter draft. Those are all the drafts that we received to this point. And there have been some comments back that the planning board have received, but not from everyone. Andrea, you're here representing the master plan. Do you have any update that you'd like to give us tonight?
No, I wasn't planning... I'm not here as a representative. I was just here to see if I got reappointed.
Okay. And to that, 2.2, the reappointment of Master Plan Committee members. So we have these names, and I have been told by Beth that all these people have submitted forms for their volunteer forms, which would mean they have to, would have to be reinstated. So, but we're also in receipt of the final master plan draft today at about 4 o'clock this afternoon. So, and with our Chairman Lance is not with us this evening, I am asking that the board vote to meet next Monday night and just do a work session for master plan and the reappointment of that committee. We'll address those two things, and we will add to that the add to that agenda, the MRPC updated sidewalk and bike maps, which we did receive. I actually printed them off. So can I have a motion that we meet next Monday night at 6:30 for a work session to address those two items, three items?
I'll make a motion to have the planning board meet on to August at 6:30 for a work session to review the master plan update and reappointment of the master plan committee. And I missed the third one. Review the maps of the walkability in the bike routes.
Yes.
Mike Verosco, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I think it's probably prudent for us to take a group, as a group, work on each of those chapters, especially now since there is a final draft. And I am told that you can see the final draft in full, and you can use the tracking system to make any comments. Okay, 2.3.
You forgot to take your roll call vote, sorry.
Well, I just kept talking, that's why. Already. No further discussion except for what I had. You say aye, roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Okay, and Laura Shipren, yes. Thank you very much. I think that'll really work out good. 2.3 MRPC update, and that's me. And I would like to just, everybody got a copy of the report. It was in the portal. It is lengthy, but, so I reviewed it, and I'm just gonna draw your attention to page 6, where it mentions, in this lengthy report are all the projects that MRPC is working on. So what I have pulled out are the ones that they are working on for Townsend. And in the past few years, we have been much more active with getting grants and like the DLTA one, and, and others. So we are on page 6, number 6, we have the master plan, and it's a DLTA project to create series of maps to be used in Townsend's master plan. Project lead staff is Karen Chapman, and she is here with us tonight. And so you can read under that, there's like five bullet points that refer to what is being done for Townsend. And also on page 16, it is, again, the Karen Chapman with, they're just mentioning the, there was no progress at that point at this meeting, which is July 15, on the maps. Basically, they were giving us 24 to 32 hours of planner consulting for questions and answering to update our master plan. Karen, this would be a good time for you to chime in, if you would like.
Okay, thank you. So I was here for your 2.1, the discussion of the master plan update. I was under the impression that the planning board was going to give comments to the master plan committee, and then the master plan committee wasn't going to incorporate those comments and send me all the final draft chapters on Thursday, and then I was going to get them back to them by August 16. If you guys haven't even reviewed it, then it's, that timeline probably isn't going to work.
Well, I think that, I wouldn't say that none of us have reviewed it, and certainly most of us have read some of it. Okay, because we were getting on piecemeal over the last week.
Okay.
So, but also, we wanted to discuss with you about the scope of services in the contract.
Okay.
Okay, so and the timeline. And, and I have it in front of me. I don't know if you do.
I do not, because I didn't know I was talking about that.
Sorry, and I don't mean to, you know...
It's fine, go ahead.
Um, but just so that everybody knows, and that it's on the record, that there was a kickoff meeting March 20 of 21. And then the GIS maps started between April and June of 21. And then in June of 21, provide draft maps to Master Plan Committee and Planning Board review, which we now have. And then 4 was for July, to make any requested changes to maps and provide final maps to Master Plan Committee and Planning Board. We got, we do have some maps that we got.
I believe they're all finalized.
Okay, so I got an email, I was copied on an email today from Kim, and it was late today, that said that there had been emails back and forth today with questions on the maps. So that confused me a little. It was, I think it was almost 4 o'clock when that came in.
There was one particular map that she had a question about, and Kayla did it real quick and sent it to her today, so she has it.
Okay. Is that something that you can send to us as well?
I can have Kayla send it to you, yes.
That would be great.
I thought that Beth was in that thread.
Oh, maybe she was. We did receive two maps today. I know we did, and it was today. Were those the two, do you think?
No, I didn't.
Light, right? Okay. Yes, Karen, if you could have Kayla send it over to Beth, and she'll make sure that the planning board has it.
Yep. I believe it was the water resources map.
We did not get that.
With the aquifer and the well locations.
Yeah, I didn't forward that. I didn't know if it was approved or not.
It may not be approved by the master plan committee, but...
We can, we can look at it, yeah.
Yeah. You're allowed to look at it. As far, as far as the chapters go, I'm not, do any of you know if the data needs to be updated? Like any of the demographics or the statistics on any of the chapters?
Well, Laura, I think you, you spoke to that last meeting, right?
I had comments on... And, and I don't know where they are right now. They are in the, in our portal for comments. But I can tell you that one of the things I was confused with, Karen, was a huge document that we got that was, it was for the housing. And, I mean, it was 160-something, and I did express this to the board before, that in, it was a lot of sheets that had this, and you had to be able to, like, kind of piece them together. But I was able to get out of it, which I thought was useful, was the sales data and DSL at a glance for Townsend. Again, on several pages wide, it would be hard to follow.
Who provided that?
I don't know, came in my email.
You know, was that just a resource that I had in the folder? Because I did compile a lot of plans, a lot of town.
In my email. Maybe, maybe it was something that Kim sent, I don't know. But certainly, it looks like the statistics and some of it looks like it would be appropriate to reference for housing and zoning. Would be my comment.
If you could forward that email to me, Laura, so I can look at it and see...
Okay, I'm not sure I have you in my... I don't know if I have you in my email or not, but, yeah, okay. That would be great, because I'm not...
Laura, did you, Madam Chair, sorry, would you like to ask Chaz Sexton Duranian, he is on the call, if he might know what you're talking about?
I...
He's on here.
Hi, Chaz. Do you recall a document like this, Chaz?
Yes.
That worked.
So, do you recall where that might have come from?
Yes.
Was it you?
We had, Karen, we had a DLTA grant that was the year previous to it. And with that, we joined that DLTA with the Master Plan Committee that did our housing forum data and data that we had gotten from research. And I can't remember the name of the gentleman that worked. He was working very briefly at MRPC, and then he left.
John O'Donnell?
That doesn't, Sean, yes, yes. We got a lot, most of that data is what he pulled from Census and Mass Census and all of that.
Okay, so it wasn't really organized well, is what I'm getting.
No. He, he put it in a PowerPoint that was organized somewhat well, but the, that's the raw data that he, that we had asked for. So what Laura is referencing is all of the raw data that he was using to pull it all together. But my suggestion, since I was called upon, would be that some of the data may be stale. I don't know if we have any new census.
Excuse me, Chaz, if it, if it was 2019, then it's, we have more recent data.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, especially in the housing chapter, which we talked about in the Housing Authority, is that new data came out only because the governor is working on a lot of programming within the state regarding housing. And we have, like, some very current data that really could be added to that, to beef it up.
Okay.
So that, in essence, Karen, is, like Chaz said, the Housing Authority met last week. They did review what we had gotten. And when I looked at this large document, my first thought was, this belongs in housing and zoning, and it needs updates.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, so the bottom line answer is, yes, you need new data.
A little, yeah.
So I'm not sure what the master plan's deadline is, why they are saying August 16. But if I, if I have to have someone collect new data, it's going to take a lot longer, especially if I have to read, you know, eight or nine master plan chapters.
We, as mass, as the planning board, are going to meet Monday night, this coming Monday night. So it's not going to be the end. It's going to be the beginning of August. It's not going to be the end. But I, of July, as was stated. But what we got at, like I said, for something this afternoon was the final draft of Townsend Master Plan is what we got this afternoon.
Okay.
So because it was that late, and you've got people, yes, that have done several chapters, but not all of them, I thought it would be prudent for us to just meet next Monday and just do this as a planning board. Lance wasn't able to be here tonight, so we would just be focused on this. So the intent, I, I mean, we heard the intent. I was on a few, I was on a Master Plan Committee meeting, and I, I was, had reviewed several meetings prior to that. And they did keep saying that they were going to be getting you the chapters to review prior to the end of July, and I believe that's what you will have now, you know, because we got it today. There's, we can't really comment tonight, but we certainly get you something after Monday night next week.
Okay, well, I think Kim wanted to incorporate the planning board's comments before she gave it to me. It, back to the scope of services and the timeline, so I did that timeline based on the fact that they wanted to be done with this by the end of June, mid-July. Technically, under the... Well, technically, under the DLTA contract, we have until December 31.
Yes, you do.
So I just want to clear that up, that it's not us that is causing the lateness.
Yes, we, yes, and that was, none of our comments would have led to that. Okay, because, as I stated, I read the contract before this meeting started on that one page with the, with the timeline. Has a timeline for meetings, but the contract itself is through December 31 of 2021.
Right.
Okay, so, not on you. We, of course, would like to see this at our next annual meeting. So I think that's probably why the September date.
Okay, so you were hoping for this special town meeting to present it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, finally, yeah. Okay, so...
Well, I'll look forward to those. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna hang around and listen to the MVP discussion.
Okay.
Can I just add the, I had, did, Laura, did you notice if the Open Space and Recreation Chapter was in that draft that we were sent today?
I did not. Like I said, I only saw that it was 69 pages that came after 4 o'clock today.
Okay, because I think the Open Space and Recreation Chapter is still outstanding, and I don't know if there are other chapters outstanding, but that's one that I don't, I don't think it's, it's done. Andrea, would you know?
Yes, I was, I was just emailing Tim. The water section is still out and being worked on.
Water and open space?
I don't know where the final draft concept came from, because I didn't think we were anywhere near a final draft.
It came from, I mean, late today. It came in an email from Kim late today.
Okay.
Anyway, I think we have a document to work with, and hopefully, whatever else, Beth, if you could reply to Kim about what you, what you see as being missing. I'm okay with Karen. Are you okay with Beth sending you what we have?
Sure.
And you can kind of scan it and say what you think is missing, and please let us know?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, now I lost my second page of the agenda. Can somebody put me on track, because I am...
I think 2.4.
The safe routes to school, which I have no updates. I got a 2.5.
Easy one. Yep, 2.4. Did you, did you get that one, Laura?
I thought that Carol did not have them updated.
Correct, so yeah.
For the safe routes to school, I don't have any updates. And then the next one is 2.5, the implementation phase of the Town to Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan.
And we have with us tonight Hillary King, who's our regional coordinator for MVP. She's joining us tonight to talk to us about the implementation phase, and what are some of the best practices that we could be using to get the plan in the hands of those who need it most and are going to do the work.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Hillary.
Hi. Not sure where you want me to start, if anybody has specific questions, or, you know, I've put together kind of a list of resources that I'm happy to send over. If you're looking for kind of an update from where the program's standing.
I think one of the questions... No, I'm going to let Beth handle that, because I think I was thinking about a different grant. Beth?
Well, I would just say, in general, the, our hazard mitigation, combined hazard mitigation and municipal vulnerability preparedness plan was approved by FEMA and MEMA, prepared with consultants, and it was also adopted by the Board of Selectmen in February. Since that time, my thought, you know, was primarily for implementation, is to, you know, get the plan out there, make sure people read it, and work to redo our MVP action grant. I thought that was like a pretty big implementation for that plan. So I'm taking another tack. I think it needs to be, you know, sort of, I think we could use like sort of a timeline and, you know, some sort of guidance on what other towns are doing when they have a plan that's, you know, it's, it's there, it's ready to go. What are some of the best ways that we can disseminate that information and really start, you know, using that plan to the best that, that we can? It's an excellent plan.
Yeah, I agree, you guys. Yeah, I agree, you guys have done a great job putting together your plan and communicating throughout the town. Pulling up some information here real quick. But yeah, it's, it's been a real challenge. As you may know, we've, we've got a staff put together for the program in the last couple of years. It was, it started in 2017, and was run with a few EEA staff that had multiple duties. And now we have, you know, our six regional coordinators and our, and our program manager since, you know, roughly the end of 2019, we all started. So in that time, we've been meeting with our communities and, you know, helping where we can with the planning process and talking a bit about, you know, what the program is, you know, all about, and what potential actions they might be able to do moving forward. And it really, it really does vary across the, across the state. And it's been a real challenge. And I know Beth, you participated in our kind of town survey last fall, where we really wanted to get a lot more information about where municipalities had been sticking. And we did learn and we understand that a lot of municipalities are having challenges moving from the planning phase into the action phase. And so that's really something we've been digging into over the last year, and trying to bring more education opportunities. Last spring, we updated our project website, and we have more resources available regarding things like additional funding opportunities from the state and some federal partners. And we've put together some kind of toolkits regarding nature-based solutions and equity and engagement. And I think over, you know, over this next round, we're really hoping to dig into what, you know, that timeline and next steps will look like. So that's a long-winded way of saying we're, we're working on it. I can give you some, you know, examples, you had mentioned the potential for, you know, updating local plans with MVP information, and, you know, being able to insert climate resilience into your master planning effort and, you know, open space and recreation plan. And I did gather a handful of, you know, examples that have been going on the past couple of years for that. But, and I, and I think as you are doing here, a lot of municipalities are leaning into their, to their regional planning associations or commissions. And they've really been, been helping out a lot, I think. But I, yeah, I honestly, I have several resources. It sounds like, you know, you're keeping the conversation going by bringing, you know, information to local events. And I know, you know, you've talked a lot about drought and, you know, getting some, you know, local education going in regarding, you know, water resources and things like that. So, you know, I think, keep at it. I'm hoping that, you know, we can talk some more about, you know, your, your water resources efforts, and yeah, we're, we're definitely learning and making more connections. I know I'm, I've just met some players at the Nashville River Watershed Association, and, you know, some, we're seeing a lot more collaborations watershed-wide. I know the Resilient Mystic Collaborative has a multi-community stormwater wetland master plan, and it's, it's a more developed, I think, area of the state. But I think similarly, you probably have a lot of similarities with some of your neighbors where, you know, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a watershed map above my computer here, that, you know, have, have similar concerns and issues. And I'm happy to speak with Beth, you, and the board more. You know, I don't know if you guys meet in person ever, I could, you know, be happy to come up and, you know, look at some of these master planning maps and, you know, think a bit more about, you know, the different angles from an MVP perspective. But otherwise, I'm, I'm here and happy to provide you all with, you know, our list of other funding opportunities and, you know, additional ways to, to find funding to address a lot of, a lot of the issues that you've brought up in your, in your planning documents.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah.
I hope that's helpful.
That is, and, and I'm just sort of, you know, what other towns have done. I know the combined MVP hazard mitigation plans are somewhat new. So I think Townsend is one of the first few, right? Or, okay, so we, we don't, we won't be able to follow fellow communities, you know, with, with regards to implementation. But, you know, as you heard, our master plan should be coming online soon. So we're gonna have two really important planning documents. And, you know, possibly, we could get creative in implementation, you know, in, in terms of both plans at the same time. You know, but there's a lot, you know, a lot to, to get organized with, you know. I don't know, Chaz, do you have any thoughts on that? Been very involved in, in all of this.
No, I, I, I understand that it's, this is something kind of new and different. But I think that we want to continue on being proactive. And I think, Hillary, that's where, where I feel as a, as a stakeholder in this, that that's where we want to stay, we want to be very proactive. And whatever is needed from us, we want to be able to, to jump right on whatever you guys need.
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, though, the way I see it is, you know, all of these plans, you know, the, the master plan, the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan, the FEMA hazard mitigation plan, it's all, you know, looking to overlap, I think. So you have your federal partners, you have your state partners, and you have kind of your local, you know, drivers. And, you know, definitely stay in touch. And I don't know if you've also been in touch with MIMA at all. I know earlier this summer, they were doing some kind of pre-application conversations with communities about, you know, different hazard mitigation planning ideas and implementation projects. So if you haven't been in touch with them over at MIMA, I'm happy to, to put you in touch with kind of our counterparts over there.
That'd be great.
Get conversations started, yeah.
Thank you, that'd be excellent. All right, thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, no, my pleasure. Looks like Laura was gonna say something. Muted.
Yes, sorry about that, because I was looking for a piece of correspondence. And Beth, is this where we were gonna ask about the grant that we were just denied?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if you're prepared to speak at all on that, Hillary. But we were, the second MVP action grant that we submitted was, we were not funded. So we were, we're still kind of waiting for some reasonings.
You know what was looking from our application? It was our second attempt at this. And we just want to know, okay, well, we did this time what we were told last time, didn't get it, so if you could clarify for us, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I, I didn't prepare that for you all this evening. But again, I'd be happy to, you know, make another, you know, appointment to, to chat about that some more. And I've been talking to Beth a little bit. We have some counterparts at EEA who deal specifically with water resilience. And they have some, some great ideas, you know, where you might be able to take some pieces of what the proposal was looking at and run with some existing resources that the state already has. And, you know, potentially help push the application in, in a, in a direction to hopefully help put you in a better position for next year's funding round.
Now, would we, I know you had mentioned a meeting, Hillary. Would that be, could we do that meeting with the core team? That you had mentioned?
I, yeah, I, I think that would be a good possibility. Yeah, we can, you can add them to the, forward the meeting invite, Beth, and that would be, that would be great. Because then everyone could, could hear from, from the representative.
Thank you.
That would be awesome, we would appreciate that. Because as you know, every time an application is made for whatever grant there is, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into it. So it's actually a cost to volunteer time as well as our staff time. So if there's some way we can get it right, then I think you can always say, well worth it, kind of thing, but.
For sure, and, and I do appreciate the, the time and effort that goes into the MVP application. It's not a small lift. And I, I do think there were, you know, a, a lot of improvements that were made. Like you could really see that you have, you know, had, had made a lot of progress and had really communicated with a lot of people throughout town. So, I mean, you, you guys were very, very close to the funding line. And, yeah, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to working with you guys more this fall. And, and we can hopefully put another, another spin on it, that'll, that'll make it better for next year.
Already.
So I appreciate your perseverance, and you guys are doing great work in town.
Okay, any other board members have any questions for Hillary? Hearing none, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Andrea.
Hi, everyone, I wanted to join for the MVP portion as well. So really great to hear your recommendations, Hillary, on both the implementation for the MVP HMP plan, and also next steps, looking towards the next round of MVP action grant funding. That's very helpful, thank you.
Anything else?
Good to see you, Adrian.
Always appreciate you and seeing you, thank you for joining us as well.
It's great to see everyone, thanks, thanks for having me.
Any other, any questions for Andrea from the board members? Hearing none, nice to see your smiling face.
And you as well.
Okay, 2.6, MRPC Grants, DLTA, and EPWP, is that the water?
That's the Unified Planning Work Program update, which is also tied into the maps that we're gonna review next Monday. So that's, that'll be covered next time.
All right, and we were adding to 2.7, we were adding the maps that we got today, the bikeability and the sidewalk. And we're gonna put that on the agenda for next Monday for the work session?
Yep, okay, I'll add that.
No other questions from the board, go on to correspondence and announcements? 3.1, notices from towns, other towns, is that Michael?
Yes, I'm trying to, I had some Gmail issues today, so I've been trying to figure out everything, on where everything went. I actually have a new email I'm gonna send you, Beth.
Okay.
I have no idea where anything just went in this room.
Do you mind handling that for Michael?
Yeah, no problem at all, I just had to pull it up here, which, just find it. There were a couple that came in late, that if it's okay, I will just forward those to the board. Excuse me a minute, I have to log in.
I saw those as they came earlier, and one of them was the rejection on that MVP grant, right? That was an email that we got?
No, that one, oh, now I'm having trouble logging in, doesn't it figure? Okay, one, all right, one drive.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to say that I was hopping off.
Okay, thank you so much, Karen, for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, all right, I'm just gonna read a couple of them, the clerk summary. And the rest of them, I'm gonna email, 'cause they're notices of decision. So anyway, this is all from Lunenburg. Notice of Decision, Site Plan Approval and Stormwater Permit for Construction of a New Subaru Dealership on the same location as the existing dealership located at 757 Chase Road in Lunenburg. Was granted by the Lunenburg Planning Board and entered the appeal period on July 14th. The second notice of decision was for a stormwater permit for site preparation of seven A&R lots at 150 Holman Street in Lunenburg. And that was granted by the Lunan Planning Board and entered into the appeal period on July 14th. The third note, third notice is a Notice of Public Hearing. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on August 9th to hear and review an application for a stormwater management permit for property located at 97 Cross Street, 125 Cross Street, 430 and 440 Malpus Road. I'm sorry, I don't think I put the time on that one, but if anybody wants the time, I can provide that. There were a couple other notices that came in from Pepperell and from Grattan. I can go through them quickly. The Grattan Planning Board is, has a public hearing notice for a special permit for a major residential development on Maple Ave and Pepperell Road. And that will be on Thursday, August 5th at 7:00 PM in person in Town Hall. The town of Grattan also has noticed a public hearing for a special permit application for a flexible development. Also Maple Ave and Pepperell Road, same parcels. That is on Thursday, August 5th at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. So those two came in from Grattan. And then we have a couple of decisions from Pepperell ZBA. This one is for a special permit at 5 Tucker Avenue for a, what is it for? I'm sorry, it doesn't say, it's just a special permit. It was for Tully Homes. The second notice of decision from the Pepperell ZBA was for an accessory apartment at 46 Main Street in Pepperell. And those are the, those were received today. I think that's it. Yeah.
Hey, thank you, Beth, for doing that. So 3.2, Planning Board Member Vacancy, which we briefly discussed before. I'm assuming that there are no further volunteer forms that have come in?
That's correct.
So I have a question. Since the term of that vacancy basically goes until the next election, which is also the same term for our associate member, can't we, the board, recommend that our associate member become the permanent member? So that, because it's the same term.
Yeah.
The last, next election. So can't we recommend her appointment to the Board of Selectmen as a permanent member so that we're not having to appoint her as a full voting member each month, or each meeting?
I believe so, can I just verify that, and I'll let you know, yeah.
And then, if, I think we can, but I, I would like you to verify that. And if that is the case, if it pleases Julie, I would like to add that to our agenda for next Monday.
Okay, yeah, as a full member.
Are you okay, Julie?
Yep, absolutely.
Great, that's awesome, yay!
At this point, it may be, um, I'm not gonna say easier or not, but, uh, maybe somebody else would more easily slide into the associate position at this time, get their feet wet, cause Julie's been to a number of meetings now since her interest and I think before, actually, she was appointed. So.
Thank you.
Okay?
Excellent.
Okay, three point three, uh, Beth, did you wanna handle that?
Yeah, we received, this is a follow-up, sort of closing the loop. Board members are maybe not all familiar, but this is the, uh, 59 West Meadow Road, where the site has, was, uh, reworked to prepare it for sale to fish and game. The sale has been completed, the land's been conveyed. And the stormwater permit, the letter that we received from the engineer basically just states that, uh, the work was done according to the permit. So sort of closed, puts closure on the stormwater permit for the planning board. It doesn't require any action, but it's, uh, no, you know, keeping, bookkeeping that, um, the chairman requested.
Okay, very good. Three point four, municipal vulnerability preparedness MVP action grant applications for 22, fiscal 22. That's kinda like what we just touched on with Hillary?
Unfortunately, yeah, we were not funded for the MVP action grant, the Townsend Resilient, um, Climate Water Assessment, um, application that we filed in May. So the core team has been notified. I've notified the water department because they had, um, offered to match funds for us, uh, for this grant. So they've been notified. But I, I do further have to notify all the other letters of support that we received. Unfortunately, it's not the fun part. But I do think it, you know, I appreciate everybody's support on that. We had, I think, 24 letters of support. An amazing, amazing network for this grant, so.
So, um, as you know, that's why I made the comments that I made. And she didn't have an answer for us.
Well, well put, though. You did a good job.
She, um, said all the right things, but no answer. Okay.
So that's the, yeah, that's it.
All right. And one more thing I wanna clarify for next Monday's meeting, would be on the reappointment process for the, uh, Master Plan Committee. If you could check with whoever, uh, powers that be, if, I, I don't know if it behooves us at this point to do a reappointment for a full year. So where we have the, uh, final draft from Kim today, which is basically entitled September 2021, so that we get to put this, we'll go to the state and it goes, will go before, um, the next, uh, special meeting for approval, God willing. Can you find out if we can just, um, reappoint through September? Through the end of September for this, uh, so that they complete their work?
Okay.
And, um, and then we can receive their report?
Okay. Yeah. Sure.
Any other comments from the board regarding this? Or our liaison selectmen regarding this? I also wanna mention that, um, it was my understanding that you have to be a resident to serve on a board. So could you clarify that as well? Cause one of the names on here is not a resident.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, Madam Chair, I do wanna let you know that we did check on that for another board. And, uh, a, a non-resident can be on a, a, a board or committee. It's not a charter recommendation.
Yes, I think it's silent. You're right. Last year we did this.
Yep.
Okay. Then we should have that more, uh, it should be publicized then. It should be in the volunteer form. When we are posting for any position, that should be one of the statements that's on the form then.
Um, I can bring this forward to the Board of Selectmen if you'd like.
Cause, because something is absent does not mean it's allowed. Because a statement is absent does not mean that it's allowed. So I think it should be, um, it shouldn't have to be a question. So if you're asking for volunteers and you have this criteria, or you don't have, or what are the options of who you are, where you live? What, if there are no qualifications, then it should state, there are no qualifications. Do you understand?
Yep. So you want that on the, the form? Or do you want it on the policies and procedures for volunteers?
Well, I'm gonna leave that, I'm gonna leave that up to you. You know, as far as the policy and procedures go. But if you're posting a volunteer form, do you attach the policy and procedures to it? No. So just, and people don't like to read a whole book. So, you know, you're, you're asking them for their time. Just be concise about what you're looking for and, and who, who's eligible to volunteer for that position that you posted. Okay?
Yep, I can do that. And then I'll report back to your administrator and we'll, um, if we need be, then I'll jump on the agenda with it. But I'm sure that you guys can, whatever they decide, we can work it out.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I just like to clear up questions. You know, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes.
You got about three hours, Lori? I got a lot of questions for you.
Okay. So is there any business to come before us this evening? No, our next meeting will be Monday, August 2nd at one, at 6:30 PM. And we will have a small agenda. Just, um, Beth, if you would put out the, that small agenda.
Yep. I'll put it out tomorrow. As soon as I get the Zoom link. Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Seeing a little more, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:28 PM.
I'll make that motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:28 PM.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in fiber, roll call, vote please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Mike Verosko, yes.
Julie Vares, yes.
And Laura Shippen, yes. Thank you all so much for your time this evening. We certainly appreciate it. Have a great night.